UBS Sutter Lives Local Government Livestreams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
I'm Megan Anderson. If you don't know who I am, I am Sutter Animal Services Authority's manager. So tonight I'll be talking about Sutter Animal Services Authority and how our financials are broken down. SASSA is unlike other departments within the city of Uba City because we're a joint powers authority. That means that we're broken up by the city of Uba City, that's 69%, Sutter County at 22%, and the city of Live Oak at 9%. Our facility houses animals 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and that's requiring multiple staff members to clean and care for the animals. So SASSA's service coverage is 608 square miles, and currently we're staffed with two full-time animal control officers. The Sutter County extends from county lines of Live Oak and Gridley to Meridian to the city of Sutter and the north, and all the way to Knights Landing and Pleasant Grove in the south. So that's pretty big. So in regards to SASSA's operations, I just kind of wanted to let you know what things are like at the shelter right now. We're full to capacity 99% of the time. And that's stray animals, that's owner surrenders, that's bike quarantines, animal cruelty cases. We assist police and sheriff. We intake animals from arrests, and especially when we're doing the river bottom sweeps and things like that, we take in those animals, and sometimes it could be 19 at a time. So as far as SASSA's costs go, our cost increases look like veterinary supplies: vaccinations, spay neuter surgery supplies, medications for sick and injured animals, emergency vet care, cruelty cases where animals need immediate veterinary care, injured or sick owned animals, and food and supplies. So with the large number of animals and increased puppy population, which makes it harder for us to house animals and takes up more space, more vaccinations must be given, and more staff time is dedicated to cleaning due to larger volume of animals and each kennel run. So when looking at our annual cost increases, professional services tends to be a very large portion of our budget. We have contracted veterinarians that are at SASSA once, one day a week. We also have cremation services, local veterinary clinics, emergency care, different items at our facility that help maintain the care of animals. We have a contracted lawyer that's different from the city of Uba City. We have our own contracted lawyer. And then we've got animal control trucks that cost a lot of money and fuel. The facility maintaining it, it costs a lot of money. That's a lot of water, that's a lot of energy, but we've got to keep things clean. So like I said, a certain level of care for stray animals and impounded animals is required by law. So we cannot allow a sick or injured animal to remain untreated while under SASSA's care. If you're asking, you know, why, why we don't just, you know, get rid of an animal? Why don't we just euthanize an animal to save money? Which I know that's not what you're asking, but California law requires animal control to hold animals a legal period of time, and that's unless they're irremedably suffering. So SASSA's staffing is lean, even when we're fully staffed. Our current staffing is one manager, one supervisor, two administrative clerks, who actually work as dispatchers as well, customer service. They pretty much have a very well-rounded routine up there, and it takes a lot of time and patience. We have two full-time animal control officers, but we have a full-time vacant animal control officer position. We have two full-time kennel attendants at this time, but we're missing one full-time kennel attendant. We have four part-time kennel attendants, and we have one part-time veterinary assistant. We are down one full-time registered veterinary technician. And so an RVT, which is what a registered veterinary, RVT is a registered veterinary technician, and an RVT is needed to perform surgery with a contracted veterinarian. Our supervisor luckily is a licensed RVT, and so that's been able to keep us afloat. We've hired a part-time veterinary assistant who's in school, and we anticipate her graduating and at the end of the year, and hopefully joining SASSA at the end of that. Our ACOs work eight hours, work eight-hour shifts five days a week, and when they get home, they're still on call for emergencies for 15 hours more a day. Unfortunately, since Sutter County lost its only 24-hour emergency veterinary clinic a few years ago, animal control officers have increased after hours workload, which is unsustainable. Sometimes getting called out three times a night with multiple other phone calls in between from, from police and sheriff. So not only are they driving around all day long responding to calls, but they're also responding at nighttime, which is another cost. So the, this chart, this slide here is showing you the last two years. And the budgeted salary amount versus the salary saving the last two years, we've actually had extra money at the end of the year, at least $104,000 at the end of the year, and that was just from salary savings alone. So with SASSA being down more staff members than normal, and three of those being full time, you can see here that that circled number, or that circled chart right there is showing you that we anticipate having additional funding at the end of the year, just like we have the previous two years. But we have far less remaining full-time staff at this time. So when looking at the total budget versus this, versus our savings over the last two years, again, in the orange section there, you can see that we've had a savings at the end of each year. So again, we anticipate the same thing happening again. Does anyone have any questions?
Mayor, Megan, when you do cremations, do you do them in bulk, or do you do each individual animal?
It's in bulk.
In bulk, okay, so you're saving there. What's my other question?
Now, there are services where people can request private cremations, but they, we, we let that, we talk to the, the people that provide that and set them up together.
Gotcha, okay. Got another question, it just slipped my mind, but thank you.
For the mayor? I was curious about the 69% in the beginning. Would you say the Uba City calls are in proportion to the budget?
Well, I would say that the city of, excuse me, oh, sorry, I just. Can you pull up the one? So I would say that the city of Uba City definitely receives the most calls, and since I know you're on the SASSA board, I'd be happy to present those numbers to you. I'd say that the, the larger cases tend to be Sutter County, because those are the, you know, more rural, large animals that we're dealing with, and Live Oak is just pretty standard, yeah.
Megan, thanks for being here tonight. I just have a couple of questions, and I've been on the SASSA board, but it just, you said you're responding to calls at night, and I realize that we don't have vets that are open at night. I've had a few animals that I've had to, you either go to Loomis or you go to UCD. That's really where you go. What kind of calls are we responding to at night? And really, what does our services along those lines involve, and are we billing people for those types of services?
So we do not provide euthanasia services at nighttime for owned animals. Owners are responsible for their animals at night, and so they will need to drive out of town, just like you and I would. But if we have an animal that's been mauled, or hit by a car animal, or something like that, my officer is going to get called out because there's no other humane, humane way to put the animal down. I mean, there are ways, but we haven't really explored those, and it would be more on the police and sheriff.
Okay, that, that helps me. I wasn't even thinking about that. I was thinking, are we responding to sick animal calls or whatnot?
Right.
And if it's, if a, if an animal gets hit by a car, so to speak, and the owner is there, then the owners take care of them. It's the, it's the ones that are injured that no owner's found, is what we're dealing with, correct?
Ideally, SASSA officers would only get called for aggressive animals, extremely aggressive, or a, an animal that needs to be euthanized. So we get called for far more than that, which, you know, we're trying to work out with some of our partners, and we're coming up with ways to house the animals in the middle of the night for the police and sheriff in a more comfortable way, so that we're not responding to something like someone's getting arrested in the middle of the night, and there's a chihuahua that needs to be put in our overnight bin.
Gotcha. Oh, thank you. That answered my question, I just clarified, I just wrapped my head around it for a minute. Anything else? No, Megan, thank you so much for being here. Thank you for.
And if there's anything else you'd like me to bring to the SASSA board, I'm happy to. I was just trying to see what you guys might be interested in hearing about in regards to SASSA.
Making the 69% 59%, that'd be a good start.
Well, I can bring it up, I don't know how we'll go without, but yeah.
Just spread the love around.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you very much, Megan.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we are going to move on to actually Agenda Item 3. And before we play the video and I ask the council to come down front, at the last meeting, we presented the Sister City Association with a proclamation for 35 years, and we had a proclamation for Torrida, Japan, and the association and myself presented that this last week. As tradition, we carried over a gift, which was a picture of our fountain along with the council and our city coin, all framed, along with the proclamation, and this is the gift that they presented us as the Sister City. I will tell you that the trip was enlightening. Never really realized how a city that is nine or 10,000 miles away can actually be so much like our own city here. It is northeast of Tokyo, and as soon as you get out of the town center, oh, let's see what we have, farms, rice farms, small houses, those types of things, looked very much like, like Uba City, and the main corridor is, they called it, it's Old Highway 99 and New Highway 99, so just a lot of similarities. Be thankful, there's five of us, there is 26 members on their council, and their council not only takes care of the city businesses we do, but there's no school board, there's no, like county board, it's all taken care of by the city, agricultural, education, everything rolls up underneath. So, so that's, that's what's going on there. I will share more later, but very, very enlightening. If we could roll the video presentation so you can hear it directly from them as they presented this during about a 45-minute or an hour scenario. And if I could entertain the council to come down front, I'd like for us to take a picture so that we can send that back to them, that we brought it back and presented it. Right, we will move to, back to Agenda Item 2, and we're very privileged tonight to have CACOG with us, and I would like to ask our Vice Mayor, Mark Boom Garden, to give an introduction as he's a representative on CACOG.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce Casey Lazon. She's the Deputy Executive Director of CACOG, Sacramento Area Council of Governments. She's here tonight to talk with us and, and address any questions we made about CACOG and the 2025 Blueprint, which is a process that's been going on for a bit. As local leaders, it's important for us to understand what's happening through CACOG as they're one of our most valuable partners. I think that, as, as you know, they represent counties in our region as well as the cities, and working regionally together, we are able to achieve a lot more than if we were out and working solely on our own. If we think regionally, we can create more vibrant and connected communities, and one doesn't need to look too much farther than the Fifth Street Bridge and CACOG's important role with that, plus some other projects that I'm sure we'll hear a little bit about from Casey. I just, I think that it's really important as well, and I know she'll probably touch on this, is that, you know, with the change in administration, things have changed, and so we talk a lot at CACOG right now about, you know, how to make the most presentable requests at the state and the federal level, and, and things like the Blueprint and the very good work that the staff does, and, and our staff, Ashley, Ben, Kevin, Diana, I know that you guys work closely with the representatives for CACOG. So I'd like to do is go ahead and turn it over to Casey, and we're really happy that you're here with us tonight, and looking forward to your presentation.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Boom Garden, for that introduction, and, and thanks for starting off the theme. I think the theme is, you know, we're, we can accomplish more together, and this is a really important time for teamwork across all of the communities in the Sacramento region. But I should start first with, with why I'm here today, to talk to you about, give you an update on our Blueprint plan, which is a, it's the long-range transportation plan that CACOG has to update about every four years. It's a requirement under state and federal law. We have been working very hard with your staff, with all of the CACOG board members, and so, so I'm going to talk about where we're at with that. But first, just to reorient us, the Sacramento Area Council of Governments is made up of all of the cities and counties, all 22 cities, all six counties in the Sacramento region, that's what you're seeing up here. It's the only organization where all of the cities and counties in the region come together twice a month, once at the board meetings and then during committees, to, to carry out the charge of CACOG, which is long-range transportation and land use planning for the region, coordination, and also coordination on transportation funding as well. And it's also just a place, if you look at our joint powers agreement, it was decided among all of those cities and counties, this is where the communities of the region come together to tackle things that no one jurisdiction can solve on their own, and coordinating long-range plans together so that we can actually get those built and implemented, I think is a very important task right there. So the plan that I'm here to talk about, as I said, is the Blueprint. This long-range plan, we've been a couple of years in developing, and it had, it's the Board of Directors adopted what we call a triple bottom line framework for it. So it's saying, for this plan that has to meet all of these different requirements for, for growth and transportation, and meet all of these requirements around hitting greenhouse gas targets and air quality targets, when we do that across all of the communities in the Sacramento region, we want to try to coordinate our growth so that it benefits people, the economy, and the environment. And that's really what that triple bottom line framework is about. So as we're trying to coordinate, like, how is growth, you know, linking and the transportation priorities, that's, those are the questions that are being asked. And so as we develop this plan, we also do a lot of public outreach. We, for this time around, we actually did quite a bit more than normal, so we did focus groups, we had a scientific poll that was, a phone poll that was representative of all of the communities in the region. We also conducted surveys and we used, we worked with community organizations so that they could go out into communities to try to gather surveys so we could get representation across all six counties. We held a big regional workshop where we invited all the local elected officials and all of the community staff that work with them to that. So a lot of work there. And here's just a little bit of what we heard about, I should have gone to this one, because this is more interesting to see, right? What, some of the things that we heard, this kind of tries to capture all of what we heard into some themes, and I think the, the bottom line for all of these different themes, I won't go through each and every one of them, but it's that really people want to have options, they want to have options for where to live during all of the different stages of their life, they want to have options for how they get around, they want to have communities there where they can, you know, have great things to get to, they want to be able to travel and do their daily, you know, daily work safely, they want to protect agriculture and open space, they want to prepare for, be prepared for disasters. And so I want to just give you a little snippet to dive in a little bit more on the theme of housing, because that was across the board in every community and every type of outreach we did, we heard this like real concern and need for more housing, and more housing that's affordable to people. Oh, I'm talking to the wrong slide here, but this is one of the things I heard. So safety, big deal, right? And I've got a slide that can show that. And then also, here we go, housing. So this is, this is from our, our survey, but I can say that if you look at all of the other surveys, it's housing that people can afford is huge, followed by crime and public safety, and then transportation choices. So the other thing that we were doing is working with all, all of the local staff, so with your Uba City staff as well, on a lot of technical analysis, looking at, because this is the requirement of the plan, we have to look out 20 years into the future to say, okay, here's what the growth is likely to be in the region, we need to ultimately plan for transportation. If you want to plan for transportation and you have a plan that has to be financially constrained, meaning we've got to say, how much money is likely to come into the region from federal sources, state sources, sales taxes, other fees, you really need to know where's the growth likely to happen, so that you can understand what's the transportation infrastructure, and then how are we going to pay for all of that? And so big picture, I just want to remind us that the Sacramento region is fast growing. What this actually shows is just annual average population growth for the CACOG region, that's in green, compared to the state, which is in blue, and the country, the United States, which is in pink. And what you see is that growth is slowing, but the Sacramento region is still faster growing than the state and the nation, which is a great thing, but it does come with growing pains, right? So that's something that we've spent a lot of time trying to work on, how's that going to be accommodated, to manage traffic to still make it so people can get to their destinations? So this shows you just the type of change that's happening, just top level across the region, and then Uba City's share of that. This is, we're looking at a, about a 25% increase in population across the region, and then you can see the increase in jobs, and housing are sort of a little closer to 20% on jobs, and a little closer to 30% on housing, and then Uba City's share of all of that, right? So this is the draft set of growth projections that we've put together over the last couple of years. And then where is that happening and how is it being accommodated? So this is a big map of the region, you can see Sutter County and Uba City up, you know, up in the top here. The dark blue areas are just where is there existing urban area, and then the light blue is where there are new growth areas. So these are places that may have a specific plan on them, and they may be under construction now or they may not yet be. And so the way that across the region we're accommodating that growth is that a lot of it is actually building out still in those dark blue or existing areas, but there's also some areas where there is some strategic expansion with new growth, and you can see up in Uba City, it's showing a little bit, Bog Stewart, and then East Lincoln are kind of those types of growth areas here. But a lot of your growth is also happening within your existing developed area. So a few things on transportation, and then I actually want to invite your staff up to talk about how really Uba City is implementing the Blueprint. So when it comes to transportation, um, so we are dealing with a financially constrained plan. When we look at all the revenue coming into the region over 20 years, it's $40 billion, which is a lot of money, but when we work with all of the, all the communities in the region and all the transit agencies, the need is actually much more than that. But with, so the theme of this with $40 billion is we need to try to make more with less. We need to try to be creative and strategic, and how can we accommodate growth maybe more quickly with some, you know, innovative, maybe lower cost solutions? I'd love to be able to share some examples of what I mean by that. A lot of the needs that were coming up were just regular street maintenance and repair. That's just this huge need, and so that's something that we're prioritizing in the plan thus far. Also, safety, also where there is new growth, to have some strategic expansion so that we can meet the needs of that growth without overbuilding. And then also how a need for, as I said, transportation options were a big need for people, so they wanted to be able to have, also in addition to be able to drive, different ways of getting around by transit and safe ways to get around by biking and walking, because safety was a huge need. So I would like to invite up Ashley, actually, to talk about, in this plan, what does it actually mean over time when we're talking about implementing the Blueprint? Because CACOG is the convener to put together the plan, but ultimately it's Uba City and every other city and county that's implementing it.
Thank you. Hi, council. So I'll just briefly talk on some of the, the great projects that we've worked on in Uba City with the help of CACOG. The first one, which is a, a example that you can see as you're driving down the streets, is in our harder development area. So that large sewer line that, that is being constructed to facilitate housing development in that area that's been planned for 20-plus years is, is in big part in thanks to, to CACOG. Additional projects that we've highlighted in the Blueprint to, to have in our strategic plan are a trails network, so the picture here shows the crossing across the river, but having a regional trails network which extends our Sutter bike path through Uba City to the levee trails, and then as well focusing on our downtown area for infill opportunities. That is a continuation of the work that Planning Division is doing with the, the general plan update, working on the zoning update, and then working on the central city specific plan update as well. So really highlighting and focusing in on the downtown so that, you know, we can improve the quality of life for our residents.
All right, I'm wrapping up here. So a couple of examples from transportation, as I talked about, there's a lot of need, there's not necessarily a lot of funding, here's a lot of what Here's a lot of what we've heard, and it mirrors really the outreach as well as what we have been working on with, as I said, all of the staff across the community. So we need to prioritize maintenance and repair of our existing transportation system. There's a lot of concern about just safety, traveling, and so prioritizing that. And then looking at technology solutions to, this is sort of funny wording, but to make the most of existing road capacity. And I want to give you an example of that. In El Dorado County on Highway 50, the road that goes through Placerville has three stoplights on it. And for the longest time, Caltrans and the jurisdictions, the communities there had thought about, well, we need to build an elevated highway there. Well, in this day and age, building an elevated highway would be billions of dollars, right? And nobody has that funding. And so what the communities of El Dorado County decided to do is they decided to try just timing all the signals during the really busy times like Apple Hill season, right? Or when people are going up, you know, on the weekends. And so they turn them all green, and then they're able to route existing traffic in different ways, and it has worked out amazingly well. They, they started out piloting it and, well, they planned it, they were going to pilot, and then a fire happened. And so that was their first piloting of it, and it worked amazingly well for evacuation. And so this is one of those technology solutions that actually solves a problem, helps to, you know, achieve the vision of the plan much faster than they had otherwise been able to do. And then lastly, prioritizing lower cost and quicker projects. The example I want to share here is actually just across the river. The city of Marysville was trying to figure out how to reduce some congestion in their neighborhoods because they were getting a lot of cut-through traffic. They got a grant from Secog to just do a real, like a test, right? They built up with some hay bales, we call it a quick build, but a rerouting of traffic so that it wouldn't go through the neighborhoods. It has been amazingly successful. It's actually made people feel safer who live in the neighborhood, and nobody's complaining about the fact anymore. They've gotten used to it, but the fact that they can't cut through the neighborhoods. So with that, I just want to wrap up with the timing because, as I said, we're partway through this process. So we've developed the draft growth projections, the draft transportation projects, and we are now developing the draft plan. So that's where all the policies and implementation strategies are going to be written in. We're developing the environmental impact report. May is when the Secog Board is scheduled to release this for a public comment period, and then, and that'll be a 60-day period. And then we'll have the final plan moving forward to the Secog Board for adoption in November. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
The mayor, could you go back to the priority slide at the beginning where you went out and did your?
Yes, yes, the...
This one? No, no, no. The next one, you have, where you have data.
Ah, yes, there.
There you go. It seems to me that jobs and growing businesses should be at the front of that list because we know that's what exactly drives all of the other things that are in the top five positions there. Did anybody point that out to anyone?
No, that's just what people had put on there. It's absolutely true, though, and we don't, you know, part of what we're trying to do is take what we hear from the public and then try to use that to help us shape things, but obviously we want to have jobs and we want to have growing jobs. So reading this doesn't say that jobs are not important to people. What it's saying is that right now...
Just the data that you gathered.
Yes, right now, housing, and, and I should say this was from 2023. So at that time, housing was just a really, really big concern.
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks for coming tonight. Just a couple of different things pop in my, in my head, and, and help me with, with Secog, because Secog centers around transportation and flow and such. The first one, I, I don't disagree that we need affordable housing, but none of us are in the business of affordable housing, and anything in California that has affordable is a lie because it's not affordable. You know, so mostly what people are talking about is what I call subsidized housing. You know, you know, it's, if we can get the jobs and get the transportation, and I, I learned this just on my recent trip of how our sister city grew out, it was the ease of the transportation that led people from Tokyo up to Torre Day that caused them to more or less in their downtown area explode. So can you tell me how Secog's going to help us in the future with more ease of transportation outside of what we already have to get people here? Because I see the corridor with Secog and GSAC and everybody else that's growing on the 50 corridor, the 80 corridor, it's that link between Tahoe and San Francisco.
Yeah.
But we're north.
Yeah.
And I realize that we're not going to get the multi-billion dollar companies, we don't have the infrastructure for that, but we are a great alternative. So what are some ideas that Secog has to get more ease of people coming up here? And even though we have bikes, that's not our main mode of transportation, it's pickups, it's cars, even our local transit, because I've been on the Transit Board for six years. Our ridership is good for a rural-type system, but it's not metro, you know, it's not metro. So can you explain to me how we're looking in the next 20 to 30 years to get people to ease of access up north?
Yeah, so a couple of things, I, I will, and I want to clarify one thing. When we're talking about transportation choices and giving people options other than the car, that is not to say that people won't travel by car still mostly, right? Like, by 2050, in this region, most people are going to travel by car. And so the, the question is, for, for everyone who might not be able to or want another option, are there viable options? So I just want to make sure that we're not thinking this is an either-or situation. Because again, like what we hear constantly, right? Both from, from you as elected people of representatives of your community, as well as just when we reach out to the public, is that people want choices, they want options, right? But on the, on the transportation side of things, one of the things, I'm going to see if we have, I have some extra slides in case we got some, some time and questions. This, okay, so a couple of, so this is one of the efforts that we have going on. It's called the Mega Region Working Group between the Sacramento region and the Bay Area equivalent of Secog, as well as the San Joaquin equivalent. And they're trying to coordinate across these regions on priority projects for transportation. And one of those, we actually, for the first time, got across all three agencies to say, all right, we have a dozen priority projects, and among those is Valley Rail, which is ultimately supposed to go up to Chico. So it's not a direct response to like, how can cars get out, you know, freely, right? But it is saying, look, if you can have some really great reliable passenger rail, that's actually a huge economic development driver. And so that's, that is on the Northern California Mega Regions, you know, top 12 projects, which we think is great because we've actually started to, to chip away at this list to get securing funding for projects. And I'm trying to see what, and so this is a, just another example of that up here. But the other thing is, is that we are really hoping that as we learn how technology is being applied in all of these different corridors, that that can then, we can learn from that and apply that in more places. And so that's what we are working on learning, both with Trip2Green, as well as there's some work happening on the 50 and 80 corridors, you said, to understand like how, what we can learn from that, and then apply that with Caltrans, with our partners, to our other highways.
No, thank you. You guys have been a great partner. You've helped us with, with Bridge Street and some different things that's gone on. And I know that former Mayor Harris spoke very highly, Vice Mayor Boomgarden speaks very highly with all the things that's going on. Just curious what the long-range plan is, because I think the, the North Rail is coming through Marysville along the levee. It would be nice if we'd get separate set of tracks coming our way to, on this side to pull them through. Sounds like it maybe already brought that up. But, but I just, again, my recent trip, I saw how that impacted.
Yeah.
And that gets people to where, you know, they will live here, but then they can commute very, much easier than a bus to downtown Sacramento or to Roseville or to Davis or wherever they're going on rail. And it would be just, just a reminder, we're north.
Yes, absolutely.
And across all the agencies, I see the 50, 80 corridor, but 99 goes north.
Yeah, yeah, well, we've got it in here. And that's, and, and, and so we appreciate actually, former Councilmember Harris and now Councilmember, Vice Mayor Boomgarden, right, coming to represent Yuba City and frankly, the Yuba and Sutter region, right? Because we know that there's a need to make sure that you're included and you stay connected, right? Because you're an important part of the economy.
Sure. Thanks, Casey, for coming up and, and the presentation. I, I think the, the old cliche of if you fail to plan, you plan to fail. And, and I think, you know, Secog, in the time I've been associated, he's an alternate and now is the designated representative. It is an interesting dance between the big power players on Secog, Sac County, Placer County, Roseville, Sacramento City, et cetera, and then Chico, not Chico, but Yuba City and, and Yuba County. I know that there's definitely been, I feel it anyway, and I know Sean felt the same way, is that we, we aren't a stepchild. But the reality is, is that there's a lot more users down in that area. So it's one of those, trying to be equitable to everything. And it was an interesting, in case you probably remember, there was a pie chart that got shown up about how the funding has been distributed. So there's a percentage, I believe it was of road miles, and then there was a percentage of how much the funding has gone through, and it was almost spot-on. So, you know, the percentage of, of miles of road that we have and the amount of money that's been available in our percentage really correlated pretty darn close.
Right, population and, and road miles, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, I think the big takeaway right now in a very challenging, in fiscal environment, you know, you're not going to, we're going into the state funding round win, so those, those things will start coming out in March, I believe that is. So our staff will start doing their due diligence and their great work, but, you know, how that, how that money's dispersed, and this year, you know, there's a certain amount that comes to, comes to us in Sutter County, but there's also a regional pool. And this regional pool is designed to, to try to take care of projects that are regionally beneficial. So whether we partner with Yuba County or Yolo County or Sacramento County for that regional pool, and, you know, that's going to fluctuate year to year, but we're definitely engaged, and I, I give great kudos to our staff because I consistently hear that from the Secog reps, is that, that our, our stuff that's submitted to Secog is, is stellar. So with that, you know, we, we start the funding round stuff, and that, that should be interesting.
Yes, definitely. And when we go through that, you know, we will be providing assistance to, to Yuba City, to any community that's very heavy assistance, to make sure that you're able to present all of your priorities as, as clearly as possible so we can keep on keeping that, you know, that good regional balance.
So one last thing I'll say is that, that I believe we're going to be limited to three projects to submit per agency.
Application.
Applications, yeah. So it's not like, you know, you flooded with a bunch of stuff we need to prioritize, and whether we work with Sutter County or not, or with Live Oak, et cetera, those are, are local determinations that we're going to need to be making over a relatively short period of time. Thank you. Trust me, during, I was on the funding working group, and, and, you know, it came through loud and clear that even these other cities that, you know, you hear all the time about, oh, you know, those roads are great when I go down there, they've got the same maintenance and repair issues that we have. And so that's a, you know, that's a key thing, and this funding setup is, is intended to take care of some maintenance and repair as well.
All right, anything else from the council? All right, thank you for joining us, and thank you for all the great work and the collaboration between Secog and Yuba City. I look forward to our future, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
We will move on to Agenda Item 4 for Appearance Citizens. You're welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on action items appearing on the consent calendar or the business items on the agenda when they are called. Public comments on any other items within the scope of the city's jurisdiction, including items not listed on the agenda, will be considered at this time. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Members of the public submitting written requests at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will be allowed five minutes to comment per speaker. Repetitive comments may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representative to express the opinions of the group. We did not have any preliminary turned in. I do have one speaker's card, and that is for Sarah. Is it Delet? Delet? All right, perfect. If you would like to go up to the podium, you have three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Sarah Delet. I am a dietetic intern with UC Davis, and I'm doing my clinical rotations at a community clinic here in Yuba City, and I'm absolutely loving it. I'm an active member of the California Academy of Nutrition and Dietetics, and the, the state is certainly overrun with a lot of, like, wildfire stuff right now. So the registered dieticians and other nutrition professionals are really relying on the cities this year to declare March as National Nutrition Month, and our goal at the state level is to get over 100 cities to declare it with this proclamation that I'm here to read. I think it's really meaningful to the population of Yuba City because this year's theme on food is connection, food connects us in all languages. And I think that this identity as a very much agricultural region is important to our citizens. So with that, I will read the proclamation. Whereas food is the substance by which life is sustained, and whereas the type, quality, and amount of food that individuals consume each day plays a vital role in their overall health and physical fitness, and whereas better nutrition is related to improved infant, child, and maternal health, stronger immune systems, safer pregnancy and childbirth, lower risk of non-communicable diseases such as diabetes and cardiovascular disease and longevity, and whereas there is a need for continuing nutrition education and a community-wide effort to enhance healthy eating practices. And whereas food connects us is the theme for National Nutrition Month 2025, which serves as a reminder that food is a connecting factor for many of us. Food connects us to our cultures, our families, and our friends. Sharing a meal is an opportunity to learn about its preparation, who made it, and where the ingredients were sourced. Health, memories, traditions, seasons, and access can all impact our relationship with food. While these factors influence the foods we eat, the foods we eat also affect our health. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Yuba City does hereby proclaim March 2025 as National Nutrition Month in the City of Yuba City, and encourages all citizens to join the campaign in an effort to achieve optimum health benefits from the transformative power of food and nutrition.
All righty, thank you. And if it's possible, can you leave your contact information as well so that we can reach back out to you? Thank you. All right, does anyone else have any comments on Agenda Item 4? Any other comments from the public? Okay, hearing none, we're going to move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There may be no separate discussion for these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion. List members of the City Council request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Do we have any public comment on Consent Calendar Items 5 through 13 tonight? Any public comment? Hearing none, I bring it back to the council for comments or action.
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
Move to take action on Consent Calendar 5 through 13?
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. That takes us to your business items. Number 14, sell and transfer of carryover water supply to San whatever, Gorgonio?
They call it the Pass Agency, Gorgonio.
The Pass Water Agency, whatever. Mr. Moody, you have the floor, sir.
All right, so, good evening, mayor, members of the city council. So it's a very similar item to a couple of years ago in 2023. And so what's before you for consideration tonight is regarding the sale and transfer of carryover water to San Gorgonio Pass Water Agency, also known as the Pass of carryover water to San Gorgonio Pass Water Agency, also known as the Pass Agency. It's a little bit easier to pronounce. This is a carryover slide from before, but it's just a kind of a high-level graphic. Here we are up north, water coming out of Orville and through the state water project. The city has rights to a certain amount of water. And then San Gorgonio, the Pass Agency, is down here in Southern California. And so kind of how we work through this, this table's got a lot of numbers on it here, and basically, this is our different licenses. So Yuba City has different permits and different licenses on our water contracts. And through State Water Resource Control Board, we have licenses for water to pull out during the river at different times of the year. We also purchase water from the North Yuba Water District with a current contract. And then we also have groundwater wells with, just bringing on well number two recently. And so that tallies up, and these numbers change, particularly the State Water Resource Control Board and DWR State Water Project, those, depending on the weather, the rain, how much water's in the river, there's, they fluctuate a little bit. And so what we have going on is, there's an opportunity. In 2023, we set up this relationship. We established this relationship. They buy water, and then they sell water. They need it. Southern California, a lot of times, their climate, their needs are different than Northern California. And then also, in Yuba City, as we've, over the last few years, as we've dived into some of our supply water contracts, we've brought new wells on, we're looking at that ASR, we've developed a decision tool to basically let us start looking at that five-year projection, what our water use is in a very conservative situation. So with this particular situation, they've reached out to us. They said, hey, we're looking to buy about 3,000 acre feet. Is Yuba City interested in selling that water? And so for multiple reasons, yes. The revenue is nice, and so that helps offset the need to go to our, your customers. So it helps offset that demand. There's an ongoing high need for infrastructure and need, and so if I have available water, it makes sense, as a business stance, to sell that water if it's safe and it makes sense. And so what I did, what the team did, is we really dove into it. We looked at this five-year projection. We looked at a really conservative method of 20% allocation. Currently, the north of Delta, we're getting about 35% allocation. Looking at that in a drought timeline for five years, looking, not even bringing into consideration the groundwater wells, not bringing in some of the recent discussions that North Yuba Water is a meanable partner, that they want to continue keeping our business where we buy water. And so, and then you also have this risk factor that you, the way we carry over water with the state water contract is that if we receive too much water in one year, then it spills, and that water doesn't carry over anymore. And so, so right now, we have about 7,000 acre feet. That's a water bank that's basically in its, San Luis Reservoir is where they do the accounting. But if there's too much water that we had in a couple years ago, once that spills, that resets that number to zero. So looking at this, looking at being in a situation where we have water rights that I feel with a conservative projection put us in a good state. Right now, when we did this from two years ago, we have about 3,000 more acre feet. And we also brought on the well, and we've also have some other, you know, where our allocations are at, I feel comfortable that it makes sense to recommend this tonight. So I could go on and on about water and how much San Luis Reservoir, San Gorgonio Pass Water Agency. I guess let's talk about the price. And so two years ago, we sold it for $175 an acre foot. When we started this discussion, I said, what's the going rate? And so we talked to one of our consultants that represents a lot of state water contract providers. There's also some north of Delta providers that we reached out to, said, hey, what's the going rate? And they pretty much told us it was between 200 and 250, and it really, and the market's softening a little bit because of, you know, atmospheric river just came through, and then there's this, if you wait too long, is that, that need that they have down south might be different. And so where we landed was 225. So in the middle, so basically, the recommendation is $225 an acre foot, up to 3,000 acre feet from that bank. It gets a little complicated as far as if all of it will be sold or not. It has to do with timing as it goes. When you work through the state, once you get the agreements put in place, then they have to actually transfer it into the aqueduct and physically move it, and sometimes it might not be a full 3,000 acre feet. If we get enough time, it will be. If all of a sudden, we get a huge atmospheric river, that might get cut short. So the language in the resolution say up to 3,000 acre feet. So we sell all 3,000 acre feet, it's about $675,000, which is significant. That's a significant revenue for the year. And so I'm hoping to look at this being somewhat maybe of a business model that we start really looking at every year, that is there an opportunity to cash in on some of that and leverage our rights that we have under the state water contract in some of these existing water resources that we have versus the demand to the south. And so with that, I'd like to recommend A, B, C, and D, and I'm happy to answer any specific questions.
Thank you, Mr. Moody. Any questions from the council?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Moody. Does anybody else come knocking on our door to buy the water besides those guys?
You know, they haven't, but we haven't really started marketing it, to be honest. And so as we kind of developed this decision tool, that we could kind of do this stress test and forecast out five years, and we start plugging in the numbers into the spreadsheet about how much we have available through groundwater, how much we have available through the allocation, it kind of helps us project what availability we have. And so I'm hoping into the future, we could start doing that. And then really, what I learned this time around is we probably need to be more proactive, so we're starting to put this in place in December or January. Because what's happened the last couple times, it starts to turn into a crunch time, and you lose some of that value as we're getting into spring and the weather conditions change a little bit.
Thanks. Any other questions from the council? All right. We'll open it up to public comment. Is there any public comment on item number 14? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, I will bring it back to the council for further discussion or action.
Through the mayor.
Sir.
And with the approval of the city attorney, may we just make a motion to approve staff's recommendations of A, B, and C?
Yes.
And D.
And D.
And D. Thank you.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Let's go sell some water.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to Agenda Item 15, which is the fiscal year 2425 proposed budget reduction measures. And Ms. Langley, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before I move on to this item, I just want to say kudos to Ben and Phil and the team because the way they've approached our water supplies, you know, within the last couple of years, they've definitely taken it to a new level in terms of selling supplies, and then also with the implementation of the ASR project and the additional groundwater wells, where we will be able to bank our winter water supplies. That just frees up the summer supplies to be able to sell under the state water contract. So great job to that team. All right. So I'm talking about proposed budget reduction measures. So on January 29th, we held a council workshop in which we talked about the current fiscal condition of the city. We talked, each department had presented 5% and 10% budget reduction scenarios, and then we also discussed mobile vendors. The action items that came out of that workshop were, at the February 4th council meeting, we were to bring forward a policy for keeping vacant positions vacant. At this meeting, we were supposed to bring forward items that can be implemented fairly quickly in terms of reducing budget items or increasing revenues. As part of the 2526 budget process, department heads will be presenting additional either reduction measures or opportunities to increase revenues. And then at the next council meeting, March 4th, Development Services will be bringing forward an item to start discussing ordinance options related to mobile vendors. So one of the items that came up related to a reduction, you know, keeping positions vacant, we talked about modifying hours at City Hall Gap, Galchea Aquatic Park, because community services customers go to Gap to register for programs, and then also the police department. So the recommendation is to close City Hall on Friday. So City Hall would be open Monday through Thursday from 8 to 5. Gap would be open Monday through Thursday from 8 to 5. And then the police department front counter would be open Monday through Friday, 10 to 4. And the question is, you know, is this a cost-saving measure? It's not a cost-saving measure, but because we have vacant positions and we're having to reallocate work, this does give staff the opportunity to have downtime with that they're not serving customers at the front counter. And we have a lot of opportunities for customers to retain services online. They can pay their utility bills via phone, they can pay it online, they can also apply for a building permit, they can apply for a business license. So a lot of things that somebody might come into City Hall for, or one of these other locations, they can provide those services online. Related to administration, we have some items to, first item is reducing budget amount for specialty contract legal services. We contract with LCW for negotiations for the labor bargaining units. This year is a wage reopening year. With the current budget situation, there's not a whole lot to discuss, so we would anticipate being able to reduce the utilization of that negotiator. Limiting the authorization of material supplies and services. It's hard to quantify this, but as I go through the line item budgets, you know, as we move forward with purchasing various office supplies, you know, we're bypassing training. When we're looking at advertising, we're really taking a look at how are we spending those funds and, you know, making decisions based upon that. And this is kind of a random, do not sponsor a booth at the Yuba Sutter Fair, but we do have $4,400 budgeted for a booth at the fair. We do have other opportunities where the police department has a booth at the fair where we could have some limited materials potentially at that location. And please feel free to stop me and ask questions along the way. I'm presenting for each department, but as you can see, we have department heads here as well that can answer the operational questions. Deanna is at, the finance director, is at a conference that she left for today, and so I'm happy to answer questions related to her items. Community services, we have a few slides here, and so we, oh, go ahead.
So, thank you. I don't want to stop the momentum here, but at the same time, I'm trying to figure out, is what you're presenting tonight, is that going to address all of that delta that we're trying to?
So towards the end, I do have fiscal impact.
Okay.
And the fiscal impact that I'm showing is based upon the vacancy, the savings from the vacant positions based upon an entire year. Some of these positions have been vacant for the entire year, some have been vacated within the last month or so. And so I can give you kind of an estimate of what the savings is going to be just on the salary savings alone.
Okay. Thank you.
So under community services, Ann, we have freezing the recreation coordinator, which is a value of $68,000. Underfill a recreation supervisor 3 position with a recreation supervisor 2, that's a savings of $50,000, and then freezing a parks maintenance worker 3, which is a savings of $106,000. So in doing so, there's going to be a reduction of special and community events, potential reduction of programs offered to the public. And then this last bullet is one that I really want to focus on, because this is the one that the public's probably going to see the most impact. So the reduction in the landscape and maintenance services of the city's 25 parks and eight facilities. So that means mowing once every other week versus every week. So the parks, we have pristine parks, our parks are beautiful, and the staff does a great job maintaining them. They're going to have to mow less, and so we're likely to get complaints from, you know, different sports teams that practice on those parks or individuals just enjoying the parks. The taller turf will cause extra stress on equipment. No longer maintain Pluma Street between Highway 20 and Bridge Street on a routine basis. Will respond as needed to address leaves, trash, and graffiti. Reduce response times for requests for service. At Featherford Parkway, we'll have minimal staff presence. Trees and shrubs along trails may become overgrown. Bathrooms will be closed. Anticipate increased graffiti and trash. And then the lighting and landscape maintenance districts, which I have a slide related to this, we would anticipate increased assessments for lighting and landscape district 4, and anticipate reduced services for lighting and landscape maintenance district 2A. So again, you know, in all of these items that I'm discussing related to community service, I think that the public's going to most see the impact related to how we maintain the parks. The next item is reduce park maintenance extra help. The costs associated with that's approximately $31,000. How the public's going to see this impact is right now, if you go to a park typically early in the morning on the weekend, you see a parks employee that's out there dumping the garbage, they're doing an assessment of the facility to see, is everything in good repair? Is somebody, you know, strewn trash all over the park? They're cleaning it up. That work would not take place any longer. And with that, they also prepare for park reservations over the weekends. We would not accept park reservations over the weekends. With this measure, there is the potential for increased overtime, full-time employees if somebody gets called out because there's a, you know, large mess in a park in which somebody calls dispatch. Reducing recreation extra help, there would be, as we already talked about, reduced office hours at Gap. And so this is part of what's driving the keeping Gap open from Monday through Thursday in terms of being able to access community services. Transition a portion or all of the landscape maintenance services for lighting and landscape maintenance district 4, which is at the north end of Stabler Lane, and lighting and landscape maintenance district 2 is on benefit A from contract services. So Landscapes by Stencil currently provides that service to parks maintenance staff. Currently, Stencil's contract is $31,000 for District 4, $24,500 for 2A. Park staff cannot do those services for that amount. And so that's why I previously mentioned, this will likely result in the assessment increasing for District 4 and reductions in services for District 2A. Another recommendation is to cancel concerts in the park. That's $5,500. You heard from the youth commission at our last meeting how much the movies in the park, how much that is supported by them. And so the recommendation is to cancel concerts in the park, even though it's, you know, an event that the community enjoys. The option is to cancel or to find other sponsorship opportunities where it's not funds coming out of the city. And then transition from a printed recreation guide to a digital recreation guide only. The cost associated with that is approximately $15,000. So staff would be providing basically just a guide that is available online that outlines recreation programs that are available, and we would no longer have that printed guide available to get at the counter or other city facilities. This next one is defer credit card service charges for credit card transactions at the front counter to the customer. Currently, when customers register for programs online, they pay the service fee associated with the credit card. If you come to the front counter, the city's paying for that service fee. And so this is one item that we recommend bringing before the revenue ad hoc, as well as other items that I'll discuss, to transfer that cost onto the customer. Ann and I had a conversation last week about, you know, if you go to Gap and you want to get a swim pass for the day, currently, that would be $8. Tacking on the service charge is going to be an additional approximately $2. And so, you know, or if you go, then you go to the snack bar and you want to get a snack, you're going to pay an additional $2. So we were talking about how can we simplify that process so maybe they only get charged once, or really encourage people to use cash instead of their credit cards. Any questions about community services before I move on?
So I was curious about the frequency of maintenance on the parks. I think what concerns me is the wear and tear on the machines. So could it be a possibility to, or I don't know how much it would save, but maybe being able to mow three times a month and just schedule that out?
Potentially, but if you look, you know, so going back to the fiscal outlook that we provided at that January 29th workshop, so public safety is approximately 63% of the general fund budget. Community service is an X-large portion of the general fund budget. And so if you're going to make cuts and you don't want to impact public safety as much as other non-public safety departments, you really have to focus on community services. And so, you know, these are the And so, you know, these are the things that can be implemented pretty quickly when Ann goes to prepare her budget for next fiscal year and is proposing additional reduction measures. All of those impact staff. And so just based upon their sheer workload, it's going to require that they program the work out so that they can get that defined amount of work done in the time that they have. And so their recommendation is every other week. They talked about whether or not it could be every, you know, week and a half instead of every two weeks. That's something that's going to have to be evaluated as they start to take on more maintenance responsibilities.
Ms. Langley, through the proposal there, I mean, our real savings is the contract savings because we're no longer going to have the contracts. But then the big key to this is going to be avoiding overtime.
Correct.
Because we could eat up the cost on that. So it's going to be very, very fluid as we work through that. It may end up being once every week and a half, once every two weeks. It could, at times, depending on what's going on, it could be once every three weeks. Because as we take over to landscape maintenance districts, that's going to move the manpower around.
Right.
So, you know, it's like the fact that we can quantify it. We know what our savings are, but we've got to be wide open on this that we can't look at this and go, well, we're going to, you know, get rid of the contracts, but then we're just going to try to speed it up and have overtime because that's the one thing we can't. We've got to keep within the budget. So with that, I mean, that's the plan I'm hearing, correct? Is it's just going to be fluid?
It's going to be fluid. The intent is going to be to minimize overtime. You know, also cutting the parks' extra help budget. You know, you only have a defined number of employees to do a larger scope of work. And so that means that the type of work that you're doing decreases. So the quality of work has to decline. And that's just honestly going to kill that staff because they take such pride in the facilities. But that's what's going to be necessary to make the reduction measures that have to be done to be able to perform the work within the time and budget that they are going to have available.
Absolutely, and I agree 100% because you know that our parks and stuff are so pristine. And there are facilities, maintenance is outside. I mean, everything is just pristine, like there's not a budget shortfall. So this is going to hurt. And it's nothing against the crews. They do a hell of a job. And this breaks my heart as much as it does anybody else. But we're going to have to start looking at these, so.
All right, so moving on to development services. Freezing a plans examiner 1, 2 position. This is a position that's been vacant all year. This increases the need for contract plan review services, but the anticipated savings is $112,000. Previously, Ben has brought forward a discussion item related to implementing planning fee increases. So the proposal would be to have those increases in place by July 1. So we wouldn't see the revenues this fiscal year, but we would then see the revenues for a full fiscal year and next year. Again, this is an item that we would bring forward before the council revenue ad hoc committee. And then limiting the authorization of material supplies and services, that's going to be a common theme across all of the departments where we're really evaluating training, professional services, and other supplies. Any questions on development services? Okay. So for finance, this is a big one. Deferring the credit card service charges for credit card transactions at the front counter to the customer. As I previously mentioned, right now, if you pay by phone, if you pay online where you have it automatically scheduled and you're having it charged to your credit card, you're being charged $2.99. If you come to the front counter, the city's paying that $2.99. And that equates to about $84,000 annually. So the recommendation would be to pass those costs on to the consumer. And when doing so, that would encourage people hopefully to either schedule online billing or, you know, paying through other methods, which then also decreases the front counter traffic, which will impact, again, that closure on Fridays. A business license discovery. This would be utilizing our consultant HDL to evaluate and audit businesses within Yuba City to see if they have a business license. The estimated potential revenues associated with that is $150,000. I have to say, I think that this one may be overstated. Deanna and I have had a follow-up conversation, and this is one that, you know, we're putting forward, but we really need to analyze to see if we can, we would receive the savings associated with this. So I want to put a little asterisk on this one to be determined. And again, limit the authorization of materials, supplies, and services. So for fire, and Chief Alexander might want to jump in on this one. I'll do my best. So freezing a fire inspector 1, 2 position. We have a vacancy that came up in December. We have one other filled fire inspector 1, 2 position. The cost savings for entire year is $142,000. This would mean that firefighters would perform state mandated inspections. And my understanding in doing so is we cannot receive any reimbursement for that. Decrease in community risk reduction training and reduction in public educational opportunities. Freezing the fire marshal position. This is another position that was vacated at the end of December. This will increase the need for contract plan review services, delay permit inspections, and then also limited fire investigations. I have to also note that this pushes some of these duties on to Chief Alexander and Chief Hubbard. But the value of that position is $227,000, but it will need to be offset by some contract services. And then again, limiting the authorization of material supplies and services. I would say in fire, there's less opportunity to do that because they are a safety department. And so much of what they need to buy is safety-related. But they will be cognizant of their costs. Any questions on fire? And again, all of these items that I'm bringing forward are items that would be implemented this fiscal year to receive the savings now. The assumption is that these would carry on into next fiscal year. And then again, as part of the budget process, additional reduction measures would be added.
Ms. Langley, question, the first one up there, the fire inspector 1, 2. You talked about not being able to do things and have them reimbursed. Do we get reimbursed now for doing some of those? And what's the parameters around that?
I'll let Chief Alexander respond.
Yes, we get reimbursed. When I brought back, a couple of years ago, brought back to change the fees associated with our state mandated inspections, we changed it so we could charge for those. However, part of that condition was to have a certified inspector performing that investigation, or that inspection.
Okay, and this, those duties would fall back on command then, yourself and the other chiefs?
Those inspections, we would have to kick back to mine staff. That's the engine companies performing that, and they're not certified inspectors. So we would not be able to charge as outlined in the ordinance.
Okay, and I take it it's probably a pretty good process to become a certified inspector?
Yes.
Okay, that answers, you know where I was, go ahead, I'm done.
This is for Ms. Langley.
Okay.
So I look at this, in reality, I don't remember having the fire marshal up there as a cut position. But even if we recruited, started recruitment now, the likelihood of that getting filled before the end of the fiscal year? That's my question.
Very unlikely to get it filled before the fiscal year.
And I would say probably similar for the fire inspector chief?
That's affirmative.
So it's good to point out, so per the policy that council approved at the last council meeting, the fire marshal position was not on the list of recommended vacancies. But, you know, Chief Alexander had the opportunity to further evaluate that. And his recommendation is to keep it frozen at this point in time. Just knowing what's facing the organization and the additional cuts that are required, he's really hesitant to fill either one of these positions because there's much more serious discussions to have related to the fire department and the services provided. With human resources, we're freezing a vacated administrative analyst position. The annual general fund portion of that position is $63,000. And then also limiting the authorization of material supplies and services. H R has a pretty significant professional services budget. And so we are really evaluating any expenditures out of that account to try to save as much as we can for the rest of the fiscal year. Police, so for police, I'll let Chief Runyon answer any questions related to this. But I'll do my best to go through this. And so freeze four sworn police officer positions. I believe right now, we currently have five vacancies, but the recommendation is to fill one of them. There will be changes in patrol associated with this, such as animal problems, only respond to active aggressive animal calls, no patrol response for civil standbys, all misdemeanor property crimes and vehicle burglaries with no suspect will be referred to the online reporting tool, no response to non-injury collisions unless blocking the roadway, and absorption of transient-related calls, which is approximately 10% of the call volume, will mean less ability to solve and respond to these calls in a timely manner. And so you can see a large shift to online reporting. And Chief Runyon, I have more slides related to you, so please interject as you would like. Freeze two public safety dispatcher positions. Again, the recommendation, we have 14 budgeted positions. The recommendation is to maintain a minimum of 12 positions. And as Chief Runyon expressed at the workshop, you know, this really impacts the dispatchers. That's a position that they have to work at their desk. And so having these two vacancies does impact their ability to step away and take a break or, you know, have lunch away from their desk. And so the value of those positions is approximately $240,000. Freeze a records clerk position. This is one of the primary drivers for limiting the hours open to the public at the front counter of the P D. Freeze a community policing coordinator position. This is the position that does the community outreach events and participation. The Citizens Academy, that was recently canceled. This is the position that would put forward that Citizens Academy. They also typically do handle the volunteers in policing, and they do a lot of the social media related to the police department. And so there's less of that outward-facing communication. And then freeze three community service officer positions. With this one, I'm going to ask Chief Runyon to come up and explain what the C S Os do because I did have a question related to that the other day.
So with our C S Os, they handle non-priority calls for service. They'll respond to traffic accidents, take a lot of those reports that we were referring to online. They'll take some of those reports if people want to report them to an actual officer. They do follow up on investigations. Even if they have suspects, they'll work those cases as far as they can until it requires suspect contact, in which case they'll hand it off to an officer or detective. Additionally, when we have all of our C S Os, one of them is in the investigations unit, which helps with, they usually handle most of our missing person cases, which there's, those are a constant. And there's a constant follow-up when people are still reported as missing, as well as help with massage permits. So when we have a fully-staffed C S Os, they're doing a lot of things for us. I didn't even mention the parking problems, Y C 311 that are usually, most of the Y C 311 complaints we get are parking-related. They're, the C S Os are usually who handle those calls for service.
Any questions for Chief Runyon?
How many, Chief, how many C S Os would be still available?
We currently have three and we're, they'll just be maintained on patrol at this point.
Thanks.
All right, next is Public Works. And if you recall, with Public Works, the majority of that department is funded through other funding sources, water, wastewater, streets. And so under the reduction scenarios, it was pretty limited. One is reallocate one building maintenance worker to another vacant position. The estimated savings, general fund savings of that is $44,000. We do have a, so this is a filled position. But recently, one of our building maintenance workers is filling in on a temporary basis, a build, the vacant building inspector position. And so, you know, the intent is to try to find another location for this employee. And then also transition a portion of all of the contract custodial services to city staff. So currently, we have a contract custodial services that maintains the senior center, S A S A, and Gap. The total value of that contract's approximately $86,000. And so under this scenario, we would either transition one or two or three of the facilities to city custodial staff. And that is then just going to impact what, the amount of work that the custodians can do at the other city facilities. And our custodians takes such pride in their work. And, you know, this is, this will be also, it's going to be tough for all of the employees. But for them, they really take pride in how they maintain our facilities. And, you know, going this route is going to be tough for everybody. And then again, limiting the authorization of material supplies and services. And so with that, the proposed modifications will result in savings for fiscal year '24, '25. So if you took all of those frozen positions that I put up there, and they were frozen for an entire year, the value of that would be $2.4 million. Some of those positions have been frozen for an entire year. Some of them have more recently been vacated within the last about month and a half. And so I think it'd be safe to say that you'd have at least six months of salary savings from these positions, so about $1.2 million. If you recall, when Deanna did the fiscal outlook for this fiscal year, we were at a deficit of about $1.2 million. And so we think with these salary savings, that will bridge the gap. And then that doesn't count the other items that were identified that relate to, you know, extra help, material services and supplies. And so that should make that gap larger. Again, the revenue items will be brought before the revenue ad hoc for vetting and then be brought before the full city council for consideration before we implement those items. And then also, some of these items may require meeting and conferring with the bargaining units as they do result in a change in the working conditions. And then there's still much to be done to reduce expenditures. And so just going back to, you know, for the development of the fiscal year '25, '26 budget, the assumption is that a lot of these will carry forward, but the expectation is that staff is going to, much as they did at the workshop, be bringing forward other reduction measures that will require policy calls of city council. And so there are tough decisions that you need to be made ahead. But the intent is to, you know, try to get the expenditures within the revenues as we move forward. The alternatives is to, alternatives are to modify the recommended budget reduction measures. You know, if there was something on that list that you have discomfort with or you would like us to explore more, you know, we'd like to have the conversation. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving the proposed budget reduction measures. This resolution is coming forward because this was something that was requested by council. It's, we aren't amending the budget. This is, this was an effort for council to show support of staff that recognizing that with these reduction measures, council recognizes also going to be a reduction in services provided to the public. So as the city receives complaints or staff receives complaints, the recognition is that, you know, staff's doing what council is requesting that they do. And again, with any of these items tonight, you know, if you'd like further discussion, we're happy to have further discussion. Or if there's items that we didn't list, please let us know and we can address them.
Okay, is there any further comments or questions from the council at this point? Okay, okay, anything down here?
Well, it definitely is a difficult decision-making process, but I wanted to say I appreciate all the staff and E Team because it's not easy to do that. And so the earnesty and seriousness with which you approached it is appreciated. I think considering the forecast of these next couple of years, like, let's hope that the valley is temporary. But we all know that there are going to be more cuts that have to be made. So thank you all for doing what you're doing and sticking it out.
Okay. Mike?
Through the mayor. Yeah, no, this is very comprehensive. This is spot-on what we discussed at the ad hoc and the goal-setting. And I think we're on a avenue that we're going to have to travel. So yeah, thank you.
Through the mayor, I think that, you know, for those of us who suffered through the COVID experience, you know, having parks closed and having services diminished due to whatever the reasons were, you know, I guess that gives us a little bit of... you know, I guess that gives us a little bit of a framework of what we might expect because these, these mid-year budget adjustments that we're contemplating are going to have an effect. And I'm hopeful, as Councilmember Cole said, that these are relatively temporary. But I think unfortunately, given the current climate, they're necessary. I, I think that, you know, the frozen positions are great, are a great step. I guess I have one, a quick question now, is what happens to positions that become vacant for the, for the remainder of the fiscal year? What's the process that, that you envision the city going through to either fill or not fill those positions?
Right, so council's policy direction that they provided on February 4th was that we would freeze general fund positions that are not frontline safety, fill general fund positions that are frontline safety or primarily funded through other funding sources such as water, wastewater, internal service fund, and grants. So anything that is forward frontline safety, we will continue to fill. Keeping in mind that, you know, Chief Runyon has four vacant police positions that he wants to hold vacant for a little while. And then Chief Alexander has the vacant positions related to the fire inspector and the fire marshal. But per council policy direction, you know, we could proceed with filling those, but other general fund positions would remain frozen. And when I say frozen, I just want to, you know, frozen, when you're talking to directors, that is a tough term because once you get a position in the budget, you want to keep it at all costs because it's hard to get it back. And so our definition of frozen is the position is still shown in the budget, but it's not budgeted. And so there'll be a contra account in the budget that reduces the budget by that amount. But the directors in the future, as more funding becomes available, they're not having to re-request those positions because the positions were previously approved in the budget.
Thanks. I remember seeing a lot of zeros by, by positions in the past. I, I think, kind of an overall statement, as we start going through things like freezing plans examiners or contracting out plans review, et cetera. And I think this question came up, I know this question came up before because Ben has raised it. And I assume it's going to be punted to the Revenue Ad hoc Committee, but for my colleagues up here, we really have to take a look at full cost recovery. And it's, you know, we try to sit back and address increases in, in costs to take some of the burden off of businesses that might want to come here, et cetera. But if these positions are open, you're going to have to contract for those services. And if you contract for those services, and the city has had some good and not-so-good, in my opinion, experiences with contract services. And, but, you know, it's, Ben, you brought it up first, which is, hey, look, you know, if we're in a, in a crunch, where is it that, that's reasonable, that doesn't kill business development or business growth, or retention for that matter, versus, you know, again, running at a deficit? I'm curious, I do have a question, I'm sorry I didn't bring it up before. I, I guess the one thing that sort of jumped, all of them jump out at me. I mean, obviously, a long history with the city, and I don't want to see us diminish any services at all, period. But I'm also a realist. The, the dispatchers, it seems to me that this has been, at least for the six years that I've been on the council, this has been a consistent issue in regards to trying to make sure that that first point of contact for our citizens, not only on emergency things, but many other things going on. And I'm worried, I'm concerned about that level of service being maintained.
So just to give you an idea, kind of where we've been, where, and you've been around the last several years, so you know, there was a time when we were down to about six in there, and that was a very difficult time. We currently have 12, four of those are in training, so they, they count, but they're not on their own, so they're there with someone else. And over the next, I'd say, four months or so, all four of those are slated to clear, which will bring us to 12, plus the supervisor. So 13 total, which we have not been at in a long time. So I, I share your concern with that. I'm, I'm optimistic with the climate we have going on in there, that things are, are going very well. And we seem to be retaining dispatchers. I, I wouldn't buy it, yeah, I'd love to fill those extra two just as a, to make sure we don't ever fall back because just like police officers, they take a long time to hire and train. I mean, it's about a year and a half process by the time we get someone on their own as a dispatcher. So, as I said, I'm optimistic where we're at. And in fact, I looked today at overtime hours for last year for all employees. And last year, we were still working through the shortages in dispatch, getting to where we are. And our dispatchers had crazy amounts of overtime because usually when one of them's gone, it's a 12-hour shift that has to be filled.
The other thing, obviously, because of the recruitment and the lag, if you will, of a time that you hire a dispatcher and/or a police officer to get them actually fully functional, the police officer one for me is also one that's kind of top of mind. If we don't, if we're freezing police officer positions, but we lose officers, then we're going to be playing catch-up again, correct?
Correct. And to give you an idea of what I'm doing right now, we just tested in January for the July Academy. We have a list, we're still putting those people through backgrounds just to kind of see where things fall. And if I have any projected retirements or someone leaving, that way I can put them in, in July and not fall behind, like you're saying. And my goal is to keep, wherever things fall, keep testing every six months so that we always have a list of people that we could send to the academy and not fall behind. Because I have lived through those days where we, we didn't test, and then you're, you're even further behind than you were before.
Okay. And I guess the, you know, the, the other things that we've talked about, the, especially within the police department, like homeless liaison and, and other, those, those are still in effect and are going to be challenged, correct?
Correct. So at the moment, with those four that you saw up there, they're, they're kind of distributed in different areas throughout the department, not necessarily the recommendations that I made. There's, example, I have one at the task force that's not there, one in General Investigations, one or two assigned to patrol. So that's kind of where my, my vacancies are at the moment. But that, it kind of shifts on a daily basis, it just depends on our needs, where, where those bodies are needed. And if someone's currently in a position. So we'll kind of evaluate that as we get into the budget cycle and what, what we could be looking at going into July versus right now.
I don't think I have any other questions. Thank you for answering or addressing those.
All righty, Ms. Langley, thank you. What we're faced with, I mean, we've, we've got to face this as a team. And I know we had the discussions on bringing this forward tonight. And I think it's real important to us that, as you said, we show that we're together in this. These aren't easy decisions, and I know that all of our team takes great pride in everything they do. But I heard, as I met with the different labor groups and such, I heard it over and over that a lot of times, you know, budgetary constraints go into effect, and there's no ratification from us as a council. And then the next thing you know, the mayor's calling, or the council member's calling, or whatever, and then we're back to doing the same thing we were doing before, and we don't realize what the intent was. You know, I, I want to say thanks to the E-Team because this was not lightly stepped into, and, and you guys have done a great job working through this and figuring it out. To residents, be patient. You know, this hopefully will be short-lived, but we will see changes to level of services, we know that. And to the council, I would say, remain resolute because we know we're going to get those phone calls. We know we're going to get people that are complaining about this and that. But we heard the, the voters loud and clear when we had the mechanism to fix all this and fix the rising inflationary costs, and, and we missed it by about 1,800 votes. So this is where we're at. So this is what we've got to do, our team, bear with us. We will all get through this together. But this council needs to stand resolute behind the decisions that's being made by our city manager and our, and our E-Team. And I think that's the commitment from us up here. So with that.
Just one thing to note, in terms of the closure of the facility, so we will get together and pick an implementation date that gives us time to start notifying the public and posting so that the public knows when our modified hours are going to start.
Okay.
Through the mayor, I think one thing that I know we had this discussion was that, that doesn't mean that staff's not here doing work.
Correct. Staff will be here working.
Clarify that, is that, yeah, that, you know, the general public's not going to have access to their city employees, but their city employees aren't getting a three-day weekend.
Correct, yeah. It's the city, I had a question today, if the city employees will, won't get paid on Fridays. The, the city employees will be here, but having the closures gives them time to work on items with less interruptions. And with the, you know, the cuts hitting, hitting across all departments, that's going to be important to make sure that they have that dedicated time. And it also gives them time to reevaluate how we provide services.
Yep. Absolutely. And the follow-up to that is with everything that was proposed up here, this is not cutting a single employee at this point in time because the one that you said was in process of transferring or whatnot. But this is, we're not eliminating any employees with everything that was brought forward tonight.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments from the council? Hearing none, is there any comments from the public? If there's comments, go up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and it's right there behind you. You have to have three minutes.
Manny Cardoza, UBA City resident. I'm going to go by perception, I'm going to stick up for the Parks Department tonight. You want people to come here, buy homes here, live here. UBA City is a beautiful place. If you don't take care of our parks, people don't want to live here because no cleanup during the weekends, mowing every other week. The parks are going to go, this is, it's going to get bad. They're going to be ugly. We're going to look like a third world. It's, and it's going to be hard for them to catch up. So if you can, I would really push the issue on the parks to make our city beautiful, keep it beautiful. And that way, people will come here and they will stay. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry Tolbert, lived in UBA County, Sutter County since '69. If I understood you correctly, and maybe I didn't, you said that you're going to only be opened on the offices Monday through Thursday, though the employees will still be there. Is there a reason why there isn't an alternating shift for that? Can't you pull somebody and rotate so that there is coverage on Friday? Because if you're closing that down Friday for the public to walk in, then come Monday, you're probably going to really be inundated with the people who couldn't get there or for those who worked and needed to get there Friday, wouldn't be able to.
I'll remind, this is public comment, so please direct things here.
I'm sorry.
Because it's not a question-and-answer time. I would say what's being brought forward tonight is what our executive team thinks is the best interest in not only meeting the public's needs, but creating the productivity for our, our, our team to do everything that they need to do. So, Ms. Langley, do you have anything you would like to add to that?
I do. So if we were to alter shifts so that you still have the coverage on Fridays, it doesn't limit the number of people that show up to the front counter. And if they show up to the front counter and they see, there's a line, and they see a bunch of staff sitting around, and you only have one or two people helping them, they get really irritated and think that we're not doing our jobs and that we're ignoring customers. And so it's, it's cleaner to be able to close it down. And so there's not that perception of we're just doing other things and not paying attention to the customers that are there to be served.
All right. Also, they talked about the fire marshal and fire inspector. There's a vacant position or two. So if that's the case, you're, did you, was he saying that the engines are now going out doing some of those inspections, though they're not qualified?
Okay. Chief Alexander, would you like to address that, or would you like to take that offline?
When we get to that point, personnel will be going out and conducting those inspections. They're not necessarily required to be a certified inspector per state mandated regulations. However, the way we built the ordinance to be able to recoup and charge costs for it, we said they needed to be a certified inspector to meet those.
Okay, that's the part I missed. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the public? Hearing none, I will bring it back to the council for any further discussion and/or action.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to move to adopt a resolution approving the fiscal year 2024, 2025 proposed budget reduction measures and corresponding service modifications.
I would second that myself this time. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. And thank you, Ms. Langley, and thank you to our entire team. Moving on to agenda item 16, future agenda items. This is the opportunity to discuss with our city manager and the council items that came up for the, this meeting. We want to have brought back at a later date for the council. Is there anything the council would like to have brought back?
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
I've had a couple of meetings now with, did the DBA on Pluma Street. And they are looking for us to look into downtown moratorium on tobacco sales for a period of time, 90, 90 days, I believe is what it was. They've done a lot of extensive work. Blue Zone is behind us as well. And they, they brought a lot to the table, they've done their homework, and they would like us to look at this.
All right. Anything else anyone has that they'd like to bring back at a future meeting? Okay, seeing nothing, we will move on to reports and communications. The following reports, communications are provided for information, and so we'll start with our city manager.
Thank you. So at the next council meeting, Chief Alexander will be bringing forward recently released fire hazard severity zone maps for UBA City. And there's a portion in the southeastern portion of town that's in the moderate zone. We will also have Development Services bringing forward, again, the discussion related to mobile vendor ordinance. And then finally, I just really want to congratulate the entire team, police, code enforcement, related to 640 Tabor Avenue. And that's a property that the neighbor has come in a couple of times to complain about. And with Boone Bragdon, who's our code enforcement officer, with the assistance of the police department, you know, they, they went in and red-tagged the building, were able to clear it. And then today, they brought in the Conservation Corps team to clean the exterior perimeter of the facility. And so great job to that. And I also just want to thank Boone for his enforcement efforts last week related to some of the mobile Valentines vending that was going on. So thank you.
Thank you. We'll come to council reports, Councilmember Cole.
Okay, so I've had a busy couple of weeks. Thank you to Chief Runyon for organizing, where'd he go? My ride along with Martine, that was very enlightening. And it was actually exciting, too, at times. We almost, he thought we were about to have a chase, so it didn't happen. But what else? I was supposed to go, I believe, to a SUBUFCA meeting as your alternate, Dave, but Mike ended up going. So thank you so much, Mike, for doing that. And then I did meet with Marty Sanders with Blue Zones, as I've been assigned to that committee, and I'm really excited to get going with that, learned a ton also. And then too, just kind of had check-in meetings with Ann and Jesse Alexander, so thank you. The last thing, the Chamber Gala, so it was a good time with Mark and Wade. And it was a great event, very impressed.
Thank you. Councilmember Paswali.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I did go to SUBUFCA for Councilmember Cole. They basically went over budget items, and I nominated our vice mayor for chair of that position. So he is our new chair for SUBUFCA. Went to the, as we all, we bought a table for the food pantry. I think that's where it is. Food bank, food bank, which was very well attended. And it was good to see a lot of really, really dedicated people that get the hungry people fed. The Tabor thing, I am so thankful for that. Those neighbors have been through hell with, with that whole situation. And I am appalled at adult protective services that supposedly went and looked into this. There is no way that the condition There is no way that the condition of that facility could have gotten bad as it did in a period of a few months. It has been going on for years. It was appalling. I wouldn't let my dog live there. And shame on them. And they pushed those neighbors to their breaking point. And I am so thankful that we stayed on it and everybody put the effort in. So thank you so much. That concludes my report.
Right. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did have the opportunity over the last couple of weeks to attend a few things. Councilmember Cole and I did attend a live fentanyl presentation. And if you thought you knew anything about this nasty drug called fentanyl, go to these things because it is an eye-opener. This drug is infiltrating our community in ways that, disguised in ways that you would not believe, I'm sure. Chief Runyon's very familiar with this. But this was an awareness thing and I, there's a website and I'm hopeful that we're able to put that up on our social media sites as well, just to continue to increase the awareness. The amount of fentanyl that can kill somebody is almost infinitesimal. It's just so small. But anyway, that was a very eye-opening presentation for me. Secog did, I'm on the transportation committee in addition to the board. One of the things that I think you'll find interesting as a group anyway, is you know those little cell phone boxes along the highway? Those are going away. And there's a different method by which you can use your cell phone to call. There's a couple of areas that they're going to keep those, but what they're finding is that the vandalism and the, they're stealing them for parts and all kinds of stuff. So those yellow boxes, you might see a few in really remote areas, but other than that, you're not going to see that. Food bank dinner, super organization, I can't even begin to tell you how impressed I am with the amount of food that they get out into our community. Mike mentioned Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency, also known as Subufka. I wish Wade is here. One of the projects, we call it Wade's project. If you, if you look at the, there's a big sandbar that's growing at the confluence of the Feather and the Uba Rivers, which is, it was, it's something that he's been passionate about because obviously it does restrict flow. I don't know what it's going to look like after these high flows, but the Uba Water Agency, Subufka was trying to talk with the Uba Water Agency to, because Uba Water Agency is well-heeled, to try to get them to deal. And all of a sudden, guess what? Uba Water Agency is now interested. And most of that has to do with the fact that fish aren't able to navigate up the river. So for whatever reason, at least, hopefully we can get that going. The Chamber Gala, you know, nice, very nice event, had a lot of fun and chose not to get into costume, but I guess Tony covered that for us, so I'm just kidding. Anyway, we love the chamber, we love the partnership, so thank you. I guess the final thing that I'm going to bring up, well, let me, let me back up real quick to Boone, because I don't often get to praise the code enforcement people. One of the things as a city council person, I consistently get communicated about is the pop-up vendors. And whether it's food or commercial items like the Valentine's deals. And so we did get a notification of the enforcement efforts. We are, we are, as time permits and as resources permit, we are dealing with that issue. And this is something that's going to continue to come up because our brick and mortar folks that are paying business license, that are paying the health department fees and are paying, you know, sales tax and are keeping the food safe. I mean, this is an issue that we continue to have to try to navigate. And there's a balance, right? You don't want to be too, someone's out there just trying to eke out a living, I get it. But at the same time, we have to, have to make sure that it's done in a regulated way. The final thing is, is, and I should have mentioned this, you know, I'm becoming more and more deeply concerned, and this is just one, one council person's opinion, with the status and the state of Adventist Health in the hospital in our community. And I'm going to make a recommendation to the mayor right now that we discuss the possibility of an ad hoc committee to have city representation, to go talk to Adventist Health to figure out what the heck's going on over there as far as healthcare in our community. When I was at a C-Community event, I hear about it. When I'm at a Chamber Gala, I hear about it. You know, some of it obviously is stories, some of it has probably got some truth to it. But we don't have an actual mechanism, whereas this city council sits down with the leadership of the hospital. And being as it is the only hospital in our region, I think we, we deserve to have that level of discussion with them on a regular basis. So I send that to you, Mr. Mayor, to consider and we can talk about any, any of the five of us, but we need, we need to have that face-to-face contact right now. Because I am deeply concerned about what's going on over there.
All right. We will take that one offline and we'll figure it out between the two of us. So been a busy couple of weeks for myself. We did the food bank dinner and I want to bring out something, especially when we talk about all these budget cuts and, or budget cuts, and you brought it up. When we go to these events, one thing this council does is we spend our council dollars, our salaries to go to sponsor these. It doesn't come out of the general fund. We've done that for all six years that Mark and I have been on here together and it's continuing on. So know that when we're doing these things, it's not coming out of any of the general fund, it's coming out of our personal pockets. Food Bank's wonderful organization, they feed a lot of people around here and we've got to continue supporting those. Janelle, sorry, the commute was hell on Friday night for me, so I was 10,000 miles away. So, but I hear it was a great time and I like the work you guys are doing at the chamber. The last two weeks really primarily spent with me was being a delegate, representing our city with our sister city and getting an understanding of, of a couple of things. Number one, just how really good we have it in our city in relation to our sister city and other, other cities around. Two is, like I said earlier, looking at how other communities have grown and what the mechanism was. And our sister city did not start growing until they had, you know, the railway was extended in. And then a second railway was extended in and that just started exploding it. And I've got a picture on my phone, they have a big cup of noodle factory there as well that came in because of it and some others. So it's kind of, kind of neat. Very honored by the sister city association or delegation, which is headed by Mr. Takagasa, treated for the first time to a private VIP tour of the National Diet, which is their, their state house, their congress. That's where the emperor will come in for opening day, the prime minister, they have a House side and a Senate side, took us behind the veil, showed us how it worked, rolled out the red carpet. And that was all done by the House of Representative member from the Toride district there. And I cannot pronounce what the county is or the parish is, but that's, that's who set that up. Wonderful visit of the facilities around, again, cities take care of everything. I got to go into the schools and experience what it's like to go to, kind of go to class in Japan and it's quite different. And the kids were wonderful and polite, not that ours isn't, but it was totally different. What amazed me, eighth grade, science class, they're learning about nuclear power and radiation. I don't think we do that over here. You know, I walked in and could not understand, but I'm looking at them going, that's a nuclear reactor up there. And they're talking about radiation, but eighth grade, they're doing that over there. That should tell you something. Then we go to English and they're learning English and haiku. And so they're learning how to put phrases together off of things they see. And it was utterly amazing to watch that and then go into physical or PE, which got to participate in a little bit of, I forget the name of it, but it was kind of like a form of jitsu and I don't know anything other than how to say it, but they had me swinging wooden swords and I had a helmet on and Spencer was, I got a picture, he hit me in the head. So is that a workman's comp claim? Oh, okay, just checking. But wonderful, wonderful time with the staff there and the principal there, gracious host, to see that further through the facilities, the fire department, which I sent Chief Alexander a picture from over there. And, and thank you to our guys here that got me six years ago going up 105 feet in our bucket, theirs is much smaller. And thankfully, I didn't know what you told me earlier, but there's probably 20 mile an hour winds up where we were, but 105 feet straight up in the same type of bucket. And he points out before, you didn't notice that the truck was leaning? No? I'm 105 feet up in the air, but they were very gracious and because I'd been up in ours, it was, it was just a wonderful experience. City Hall, learning their history, learning how they relate and how closely similar our cities are. And they face the same challenges. They are going through an extraordinary time of budgetary problems and cuts because right now the dollar is very, very strong and the yen is very cheap for us, but their costs are still going up and they have to describe. I want to put this in perspective because I had to jump onto a meeting while I was there and I didn't have AirPods for my phone. Apple says the price worldwide, they're $390 for AirPod Pros. Well, it was 300, what is it, 390,000 yen over there for that. The conversion, I paid $260 for, for something, so I saved a third. That's how strong the dollar is. And so when you compile that or compound that with everything they've got going on, they're really struggling. But to walk around, I will tell you that all the workers through agricultural education, public safety, I'll use just fire because police chief is all-state police, there's no local police there. It was like sitting down with our team here. Everybody cares about the job they were doing. Everybody takes great pride in everything that they do. And it was amazing. And the plan is now for hopefully a delegation to come over in, in the fall. And hopefully COVID took out the kids from really going and hopefully we can build that back in because the chance to immerse yourself in the cultural experience and learn from a city that is so similar, but yet so far away, I think there's a lot that we can learn from our friends across the, across the ocean there. So with that, I want to say thank you to Mr. Takagasi, the mayor of Toride, the city council of Toride, to the member of the House of Representatives and his chief of staff for the gracious hospitality and the things that they taught us while we were there. And hopefully we can reciprocate when they're able to come over here in October. And really looking forward to it and I hope you get to go next to your brother, that was, that was a nice trip. And back what I said two weeks ago, it did not go on the city's dime. We're talking about budget cuts. I went on my dime and that's the way it needed to be. If there's nothing else to come before the council tonight, this one's kind of sad. But we need to take a couple of moments and we are going to, to close in memory of a former mayor, Charles Chuck Papa George, which many of us know. He was a lifelong resident of our community and he served this city well and left a lasting impact on us all. Our thoughts and prayers go out this evening to his entire family. And before we close, I would just like to take a moment of silence in honor of our former mayor, Papa George. We stand adjourned.